I'd like to call this meeting to order. In the section of adopting the agenda, I would recommend to amend the July 17, 2017 regular agenda to include a late item under Section 8D from the Manager of Development and Engineering and development permit for Women's Transition House. And also in further as a late item under Section 12, late item with regard to the matter of a proposed disc golf project which was referred from this morning's committee of the whole meeting. May I have a mover on the amendments, please? Counselor Butler, seconder, Counselor Hammond. All those in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed, so carry. Now may I have a mover on the amended agenda as presented? Counselor Butler, Counselor Crog, all in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Okay, moving on to the minutes. May I have a mover to adopt the June 19 Committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Thompson, seconder, Counselor Crog, all those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Again, adoption of minutes. May I have a mover to adopt the June 19, 2017 regular meeting minutes as presented? Mover, please. Counselor Hammond, seconder, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Then, may I have a mover to adopt the June 26, 2017 regular meeting minutes as presented? Mover, please. Counselor Thompson, seconder, Counselor Hammond, all those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Okay, moving on to... We have no registered petitions, allegations, unfinished business. Okay, we have reports and questions from council, written reports of council. May I have a mover to receive all these reports of council for the July 17 regular meeting? Counselor Hammond, seconder?
Sorry, which written reports?
Six A, written reports of council. We only have, oh, there should be one.
I don't know.
There's...
Tom.
Thompson.
Yeah, Counselor Thompson.
And I have a thing too. Okay, so, okay, Counselor Crog, you want to initiate something? Go ahead.
Ooh, initiate something. I would like to just do a verbal report because I didn't have time to get anything in. And I know there's some concern, or there's always concern about conflict of interest. And Section 107, I've been advised that 107 of the community charter talks to municipal contracts with members of council must be reported at a council meeting that is open to the public. My company has been asked to provide catering for the upcoming Snowbirds event. The funding for this event is being provided from different community stakeholders, one of them being the city of Grand Forks. And even though I don't have a contract with the city of Grand Forks, I'd just like to inform council and the public about the service my company will be providing. I will be organizing, preparing, cooking, and serving food with no monetary compensation for my company or myself. Any invoices submitted for payment to the event organizers will be for actual cost for the food and labor for the servers. No charges will be made for the use of my commercial kitchen, operating expenses, catering equipment, anything, as it's all being donated, because I want that contribution to see the event come to Grand Forks. So if any questions arise as the way a counselor is doing it, it's because I'm doing it for free, right?
Good for you.
So I just thought I'd let everybody know.
Good for you.
Okay.
You can cook for me anytime.
I want to fly, but I'm just hoping the smoke doesn't kill everything.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so...
So that was it.
That is it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Crog.
I did give a call today.
So all those, we need a mover? We didn't have a seconder on the receipt.
We've seen the report.
Yeah, so we'll have a seconder, please.
For both of the points.
All seconders.
Okay, Counselor Thompson. All those in favor to receive? Anyone opposed, so carry. Okay, moving on to the report from Council representative to RDKB, that would be myself, and seeing as most of our meetings were canceled, I have no report to present this evening. We have nothing to receive, so we're moving on to Item 8A, which is application for subdivision in agricultural land reserve on 75th Avenue. Manager of Development Engineering will speak for it. The recommendation is that council supports the application for subdivision of Lot 2, District Lot 8, 520, Land KAP 5090, Land District 54, Except Plan 5210, 8653, 11971, 12795, 13376, 19535, 21583, 23494, and 38138. And excluding portions outlined in red on Plans B 7375 and E 10098, located north of 75th Avenue and 25th Street, and direct staff to complete the local government report to Agricultural Land Commission. Mover, please. Counselor Crog.
And could I get you to repeat that? No, I'll move it. It's a safety issue.
Counselor Hammond, seconder.
Good idea.
Discussion?
Oh, I still have your presentation.
Yeah.
Okay. Come on. You might have your mic on.
Oh.
So this is the proposition on the Hutna Elementary School, and they're looking at getting some parking. They want to track the congestion out in front of the school, and there's very little parking out in front of the school. So for safety, they're looking at providing a parking space on the east side of the school. And the property is owned by a local family, and they would like to, I'm not sure what the arrangement is with the school district, but they would like to provide the land for this parking space. So the owners of the land have submitted the application to the ALC for this, and we have started our process and sent out referral letters to all potentially affected stakeholders. And we got one response back from IHA in regard to food security. And being that this is an application to the agricultural land preserve, I would assume that if, you know, if the ALC feels that this is an issue for the surrounding food security, that they will be the final answer on that. And their other comment from IHA was in regards to development of better active transportation, so biking and other opportunities for folks to get around, rather than driving. Other than that, that was the only comment that we did get back from our referrals that we sent over. And other than that, there was pretty much no report. So if the council makes this decision, then the ultimate decision is by the ALC to determine whether or not to allow this to proceed. And we would probably want to talk to the school district if there are concerns about food security, about maybe potentially they could have some sort of a programming program or something through the school to help also to mitigate loss of the property.
Mayor Conrad, can I speak to this?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Counselor Ross.
Okay. It's always a concern for me when I see agricultural land being taken out of production. And as we all know, the valley has lost a lot of its agricultural strength and capacity over the past few decades, particularly the past two decades, three decades. And we're seeing a resurgence, a resurgence again, will we, people coming back into the valley and starting to farm again. I am in the vote in favor of this, but I do want us to be conscious as a city that we don't have something called urban encroachment on rural land. This is arable land, and I'd make me rather sick in my stomach to think that we're going to make it into a parking lot. Understanding the need of having more parking safety for the school, I understand that, I understand that, but it does make me feel quite ill that we're actually paving over good soil, and we only have 3% of really good prime agricultural soil in this province, and we're putting a parking lot over some of it here in Grand Forks. So let's just be mindful of it as we start taking land out of the agricultural land reserve. It makes my heart rather sad.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, I agree, but we're not the ones taking the land out of the agricultural land reserve. If it gets taken out, it'll be the ALC that allows that to happen. Well, if the ALC allows that to happen, then we're just permitting school district 51 to utilize that land as they see fit.
I understand that, but we're endorsing it. Our cabinet resolution, we're endorsing that activity.
Correct. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I would echo what Counselor Ross has stated here. I will be voting in favor of it, but I don't like the idea either. It's great farmland, it's unfortunate it's not being farmed, and most of it's burial estimate at the moment, it's probably a fire hazard. There's other areas in Hutna, I'm wondering if they've explored areas that have already been paved that could be utilized better. I mean, I'm at the school all the time, so I see that there is definitely a need for parking. It's unfortunate that this is the solution. Someone had better one, I'd rather vote in favor of that.
Thank you. Do you have a manager?
We've been discussing some different options for parking, and I don't, you know, we don't want to see a asphalt parking lot either. There are other options for parking that allow for green, and it would, you know, easily transition back to farmland that way. So, and yeah, we kind of feel a little bad about it as well, and we're supportive of protecting agricultural land, but there are just so few options for this location. And I think this school and schoolwork has looked at all the options, and this is probably the best one.
Thank you. Counselor Butler?
I'm just wondering if angle parking has been considered along the street there? Because right now people park, parallel parking, but if we did angle parking, might provide more parking, is that an option?
Um, it's something we have to look into, but it doesn't sort of take away the fact that you have children out on the street and coming out on the streets. I think that that was maybe another concern, was that the kids are all out, and the buses are running and trying to get that off the street, and safety issue.
Okay. I'm going to call question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. All right, Item 8D, it's Policy 114 name change from our Deputy Manager of Operations. Recommendation is that council change the name of Policy 114, temporary commercial use on public property. Policy 1208, temporary commercial use on public property. May I have a mover? Counselor Thompson, seconder, Counselor Crog, discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. I don't think there's much elaboration on that subject. 8C, Policy 1207, use of city property or facilities, again from our Deputy Manager of Operations. Their recommendation is council adopts Policy 1207, use of city property or facilities. Mover, please. Counselor Hammond, Counselor Thompson, discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Now we have Item 8D, which was the development permit for the Women's Transition House. And we have, and the Manager of Development Engineering, I believe this was from this morning's committee of the whole, so I don't know what the recommendation would be to approve the...
It was in the committee of the whole resolution.
Yeah, it was in the committee of the whole resolution. It would be to approve for...
So the council approves the development?
With a form and character. Yeah, portion, development permit. My apologies, everyone.
The wording needs to change.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Recommend to council...
Let's just...
To approve the development permit for the Women's Transition House to be located on Lot 1, District Lot 380, SDYD, Land KAP 85777, 19th Street, north of 68th Avenue. Mover, please. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammond. Any discussion? Okay. Counselor Butler?
Okay.
And Counselor?
Yeah, we had a great discussion about this this morning and covered most of the issues. To just stay on the topic specifically of form and character, my only concern with the drawings that I saw this morning was that the form and character of the building, I'm hoping it's not going to look institutional with the gray stucco that's being used. I'm hoping it will blend more into the surrounding community and to make it look more of a residence rather than an institution. I'm just wondering if anybody else had that concern as well?
It looked like a little gray area.
Yeah, I, yeah, I share your concerns, you know, looking at that, the gray and kind of bland, but in listening to the architect, it sounded like, you know, it's, that's not a conceptual drawing, it's just sort of the plan. So I'm thinking that it's going to be, it will fit into the, into the area.
Yeah. Again, being just a plan drawing, I mean, you can't really derive the stucco effect once it's stuccoed. Probably have a complete different appearance, just like the roof if it's a metal roof. And if there is a bit of a slight shade variance on the metal roof, it will enhance it. And plus, we always have to remember, as you get stated, we have to try to keep it as a subdued type place rather than have it come right out at you, because I guess you could go, oh, there's a nice graffiti on there. It would look really good.
You can always paint, right?
Exactly. Paint is available if it should. I think it's a very good building.
Counselor Hammond?
I'm just wondering if that resolution or the needs to be changed rather than approves the development permit, the development permit specifically for form and character?
Hmm, I think that was, yeah, there would be, but the, all the elements have been addressed, I believe, other than form and character. So once we develop it, it's encompassing that. But if you'd like to add that to the resolution, but I don't think there's any need.
No.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, what did you say?
Okay, because of the fact that Counselor Hammond has suggested that we include in the resolution in regards to approving the development permit in regards to form and character, but because, as we discussed this morning, all the other elements of this development permit have been addressed. The only element left was the form and character, so I don't think there's a need to specify specifically on form and character element. If we approve the development permit, that obviously is the last element left.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think we need to elaborate on the resolution, but our Manager of Development is just going to make a comment. No, you weren't. Okay. So I think we just carry the ball. So if there's any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Crog is opposed.
Yeah.
You don't like the building?
No, it goes back to the whole thing.
Counselor Ross, you're obviously not opposed to this meeting.
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion is carried. Okay, moving on to Item 9, request from council. My apologies, my computer's not working, so I'm reading a hard copy of the...
It's a Dell.
Yeah, maybe it's not, it's a PC. Yeah. Okay, it's very square. Yeah, we're down to information items, and it's 10A, it's the UVCM 2017 Convention Registration. Subject matter, the UVCM 2017 convention will be held at the Vancouver Convention Center from September 25th to 29, 2017. The recommendation council receives for discussion, the UVCM 2017 Convention Information Registration. Mover, please. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Butler. Okay, let's start our discussion. I know why you can't hear, because I'm not using my mic. My apologies.
Yeah, the microphone's right in front of you. Anyways, I would like to attend the UVCM this year. I have purposefully not attended conventions, I believe, for probably the past two years because of monetary issues I was concerned about for the city. This one, like, I would like to have some input on the ministers we're going to meet and that type of thing, so I would request that I be able to attend.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I would also like to attend the, there's two conferences that I think are valuable to me, and that's the AKBLG and the UVCM. And, you know, meeting with the ministers, debating the resolutions, I very much want to be a part of that.
Yes, and also we'll be addressing the performance measures also at that UVCM. Counselor Ross, how do you feel about?
Well, I would like to attend. I mean, I know many of the MLAs, and I'll know these MLAs have captive position for meeting government, and I would like to attend. I think it'd be very interesting, and I think we could be very effective there under this, with this new government, in particular. I think they're taking quite a different trajectory, really looking more at social programs and community support. So I am very interested because that is right up my alley, and I think it's one of my strengths. So I would like to represent Grand Forks at that convention.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, just following up on Counselor Ross's statement about this government being more amenable to social programs, I think it's really important that we include in our ministers' meeting something to do with our discussion that we had here today with regards to our homelessness issue, drug and mental health issues that we're dealing with. It would be really nice, like the regional director stated, if he could come to the meeting as well, get other people from our area on board, and approach this collaboratively, and put forward some concrete steps that we'd like to see happen in our community, and a concrete ask from the minister. We've already had our Transitional Housing Committee sit and do some valid research in that area, so we do have some steps that we've taken already that we can demonstrate to the minister, and hopefully between now and then, we can come up with a task force and some concrete asks to go forward with.
Plus, having said that, I believe we received a letter from the mayor and council of New Westminster. Also, they are also putting a proposal, and they wanted our support in regards to addressing the homelessness situation also. So I don't know if council received this.
I don't remember seeing that.
Well, it went to, it went to the weekly summary, it was an unwedley summary, but if you were to forward your copy.
Yeah, I read it, I read the weekly summary, but I haven't noticed.
Yeah, there was a couple of resolutions they were planning to put forward. Some of them was regarding rental, rental situations, and, but the one that stuck out first was the first one, which was regarding addressing the homeless, and this was adopted on June 12th. So Vancouver increased by 29.8% between 2014, 2017. So anyway, it goes on to speak to the issue at hand, also rent, rent evictions, whatever that is.
What was that?
Rent eviction is when a landlord can evict somebody because they want to renovate and ask for more rent, and that's huge. But the problem here is we need more people from rural communities attending this, because there's such a focus on Vancouver and the lower mainland and Victoria that rural BC is forgotten, and there are campaign promises on low income housing and working with homeless and addictions and mental health. And we need to hold our speech to the fire now, this new government. So we need to remind them that they need to focus on rural British Columbia.
Okay, so anyway, that's kind of indirectly interesting for our court. So that's, Counselor Hammond? Okay, that was working.
Yes, I'd like to attend the UVCM too. I know last year we had some very productive meetings with the ministers, and what was discussed today, I think should definitely be brought forward. In fact, I mentioned it this morning. But I think also we should have that task force in place so that we have recommendations to take from all of the sectors that are going to be represented, so that we can speak on their behalf and have some definitive asks when we go there.
So right now, we're looking at four counselors, I'm myself, so we're up to five.
Yeah, it seems like everybody would like to attend this year, because I know Counselor Tripp sent him an email as well, and I'd like to go as well. I didn't attend the first year I was on council, oh, sorry. I didn't attend the UVCM the first year I was on council. I did go last year, and of course, Counselor Tripp and I paid our own way to the AKBLG this year, so I don't think we've used up our, a lot of funds. We also don't have counselors going to the FCM, and I don't think his council has sent quite a few people back east.
There's one calling.
Oh, she called, I didn't want to...
No, no.
Counselor Ross went.
She went once.
That wasn't the FCM?
Yes, it was. Was the FCM in Ottawa?
Yeah.
No, I never went to the FCM. I went to the Sustainable Community.
Yeah, there was a different...
Went to the sponsor by the FCM.
Yeah, which is sponsored, yeah, which is sponsored by the FCM though.
Right, but it wasn't the Sustainable Community.
Yeah.
So I'd like, Counselor Ross also said, I think it's important that we have a strong representation from the rural communities, and with a topic such as homelessness, that we show we have our full council support, and we are 100% behind making this happen, that our council is united on this.
Yeah, I think it would be a good issue that also that probably with this task force to get the mayors involved and have a similar mayor's caucus prior meeting to the meeting with the ministers, especially communities that have a direct impact on this situation like we do. Okay, so now we are looking at six counselors and...
Oh, I'm just wondering if we have an idea for our second ministers' meeting?
You have an idea of what?
Second ministers' meeting.
We haven't decided.
We haven't decided that, I guess, I guess right this evening, the main topic of discussion here is the registration of who's planning to go and for what reason. And I guess we've kind of elaborated to that point, we've all made our points why the actual topics and resolutions, and that we could still work on, there's time for that. Counselor Butler?
I also just wanted to reiterate, I know Counselor Thompson, you have a motion that's coming forward for the UVCM, so I think it's important that you be there to introduce that, and also Counselor Tripp has a motion coming forward as well, that it's important that the people that have put forward the motions, I think that they attend, because what happened at the AKBLG was there was a last minute amendment that needed to be made, and because Counselor Tripp was there and could speak to it, she understood the issue in detail and was able to make that amendment so that the motion could go forward. So you two ladies in particular, I think it's important that you attend.
Yeah, it would have been amended whether she was there.
And myself, I'm going to, again, hopefully meet with some of the other mayors and discuss what the status is of the integrity commissioner, and also the code of conduct, to hammer that one home again, see where we're at with that.
Well, if I may, then perhaps we need to meet with the new Minister of Community Support and Cultural Development to hammer that home to him as well as the local government.
That's right, because Minister Fassman is no longer in that position.
No, and I don't know who, I don't think that John Horgan has announced who his ministers are going to be at this point, so that, we'll know that tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, and then I guess we can discuss the issues. Okay, count to our CEO.
Usually around the beginning part of August is when we get the information from the UVCM. Now, because they're still deciding who the ministers are, it might be delayed a little bit, but we should be getting that information for the August 21st meeting. I'm suspecting that we should get it by then, so council can prepare for whatever briefing notes that we need to have done for that for the UVCM. Also, if I might?
Go ahead, Counselor Thompson. Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Um, I wonder if we should meet with the Interior Health as well, just as a suggestion to when there are issues with the homeless and they have mental issues and it's not between the hours of day and floor Monday to Friday, there's no one from those ministry, that ministry to offer assistance. And so perhaps, and I'm just tossing out an idea that it might be something that we want to meet, who is IHA, to discuss and encourage them to...
To discuss a possible hotline or of some sort, like a 911, but directly to IHA, something on that nature. Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, or to have someone who's on call and available. Yeah, it might cost some overtime, but they're in the better position to make some assessments, I think, than laypeople.
All right. It's worth the try. Counselor Hammond, Counselor Butler, then Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, and just to add to what Counselor Thompson was talking about, IHA, I'd like to get more information on why or of how the legislation can be changed to include methamphetamines and fentanyl and carfentanil as a mental health problem rather than just a mental health episode because like the police have been telling us, they have no ability to arrest somebody having a mental health episode. Whereas if it was a mental illness, they can be committed and get treatment. So I'd like to see the legislation changed in that areas that our police force has more teeth when they're out on the streets and being able to deal with these people.
Well, they can't arrest. It's not that they can't arrest.
They're released. Yeah, it doesn't go to the courts.
It's the judge. Yes, it's the judge. It's not the police.
Or the doctor that lets them go.
The doctor lets them go because it's not a mental illness, it's a mental episode.
And the police are basically handcuffed. They have to bring it and have to mentally assessed by a physician, at which point it's the police wasting their time sitting there and holding individuals' hands, so to speak, and they're just released.
That would have to go through the ministry of health. So not just I to check.
No, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to speak to the minister more so then. But the dialogue could be started with IHA too. Counselor Hammond?
Well, I was hoping that... I was going to say that I was hoping that we would have some of these, some of this information and recommendations once the task force is formed, before attending the UBCM. Because IHA needs to be involved in this as well as one of the contributing parties because they're a major player in this. So I think, you know, the sooner the better that we can get these people together under one roof and start talking about the issues, the sooner we can prepare for our asks and have a solution in hand because we're more likely to get granted the funding or the requests if we have a solution that we think that will work. So I think it's really important that we start, like tomorrow, hitting the ground running and start getting this thing off the ground.
We won't be running if we hit the ground.
I just roll.
No, it's imperative that the task force gets going, for sure, and see what players are going to be involved in it. It's going to be a little tough because summertime, vacation time, it's obviously always a tough time. But when is a good time? We have to make one.
There's always somebody from one of the agencies that's going to be here because they don't shut them down for the summer.
Oh, exactly.
So there'll be somebody that can represent.
And also, we want to see from the organizations themselves if they're willing to be involved in putting this on the ground. Whispers, etc., so we see where we're at with that. Okay, so we've had our discussion, we received it, so...
I think we need to vote on receiving. We had a first question.
Yes, we did. We had a movers, but now we're going to vote. So all in favor of receiving for discussion? Anyone opposed? So carried. We have a late item. We have no bylaws. Our late item would be 12 in regards to the matter of the proposed Disc Golf project, which was referred to from this morning's media the whole meeting. Do you have an actual... Director Russell had something?
Yes, worship, Director Russell had part of a resolution she framed and as staff, we had a couple of pieces that we felt were important for council to consider as well. So we've meshed it all together and our deputy corporate officer, I believe, has that formulated. So if you would like to have him read it out for council's consideration.
Please, go ahead.
I can put it on the screen. Well, it's on the other. Okay, so we've got it written down currently as a result that council direct staff to investigate the suitability of use for parcel C for A, the purpose of a Disc Golf course, B, to work with the Grand Forks Disc Club to develop a plan stewardship or slash stewardship agreement, C, to explore partnership with Royal Grand Forks to deliver the possible project, and D, to bring forward a report to council prior to the end of October 2017.
May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Butler, seconded. Counselor Thompson. Any, does anyone have a discussion on this? I don't think it's pretty straightforward. So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. All right. Last but not least, we move on to questions from the public and the media. And again, may I inform everyone the on-subject matter of Stephen's agenda? Thank you. Lady in the front.
Yes, thank you, worship, Kate Salish for the Grand Forks Gazette. Just for clarification, is Disc Golf the same as Ultimate Frisbee?
No.
No. No.
I can't think, but no.
If you go online, it's a very interesting game. They actually have videos of how it's done. Counselor Crook, once you get into this, I can tell.
Yes, the athlete in me is crying out for Gatorade. I watch a lot of sports. Ultimate Frisbee is a football team style game and Disc Golf is golf. So they'll have nets, basically, instead of holes in the ground. And you take your frisbee and you go and how many shots it takes you to get there. It's awesome.
And the nets are suspended up in the air.
Yeah, yeah.
Very interesting. And if you get real angry, you can throw one of your frisbees at the opponent.
Full contact.
Contact frisbee.
All right, thank you. My second question is, where did we arrive on the task force issue? Are staff currently investigating? Has it been formally called? Like where?
No, it was, I guess, a terminology that I started stating that we were going to establish a task force, which instead of a committee, because I don't believe in committees, I believe a task force is similar to a committee. But once the job is done, it's done and we dissolve the task force. So this is the avenue that I feel would work best for the city and for the corporation. But I will be in communication with staff to see what players we can get in and we'll discuss it further with council and have some of your council members involved too. But it's got to be a really broad spectrum where I'm actually reaching out to other mayors too and to see from other municipalities where it's at in their communities. Hopefully, we'll get enough feedback and response to make this as a collaborative thing because as you can see, New Westminster is already going forward with the same type of resolution to UBCM. So it is a situation, like I stated today at the committee to hold, it has to be addressed. It's a very serious situation, not just for Grand Forks. We're not unique in this. So we're a better time to do it collaboratively with all players, all stakeholders, including Area D and all of them.
So at this point, we're looking together, we're looking at putting together the task force.
Yes.
Is that the state we're at? Okay, yeah.
Today was just a discussion part, but now we got to get, we got to get going on it.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen in the second row.
Ray Hanson. I frequently cycle past Hutten and on the west side of the building, there's a playground fenced off, but there's quite a paved area from the road right of way back to the fence. And I'm sort of thinking, if you had signage there and maybe even some marking on the asphalt, you could actually drop children off and pick them up there without having to have an additional area.
I can speak to that.
Counselor Butler?
That's the bus area where the buses come in, drop off and pick up. So it's usually occupied at those times, yeah.
The other item, if I may, you were talking about mental health. I happen to be involved with Whispers and we had a lady from IHA here locally come to our board meeting and talk about the resources that are available locally through IHA, through the Grand Forks boundary area. And her name is Suzanne Lee. And she's actually the coordinator of alcohol and substance abuse or mental illness, probably. Substance abuse in older nurses or something similar to that. And she is very informative in terms of what's now available and what could be available. And she actually started to send a person to Whispers once a week to outreach clients at Whispers, which is a big change because prior to that, if you wanted to get services from Interior Health, you had to go yourself and register. Whereas this is kind of an outreach in a sense. So I think there's lots of opportunity to enhance that and to perhaps expand that to be more effective